Here, get them on. Any agenda questions? We're working off the revised agenda. Everybody's got a revised agenda copy, is that right?
Right.
You're gonna get one to 'em, okay. Any specific councilor concerns before we get into scheduled items? Going once, going twice, not seeing any answers. All right, let's jump into our scheduled work session, starting with Garden Acres, WWSPIGA.
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and councilors. My name is Zach Weigle, Capital Projects Engineering Manager for the city. And before you tonight, on the regular session is a, on the consent agenda is a resolution to allow the city manager to sign an IGA with Willamette Water Supply for the joint design and construction of the Willamette Water Supply Pipeline and the Garden Acres Road. So, go ahead. So up on the screen is a map of the area showing the limits of the Garden Acres improvements and where the water line construction is gonna take place. So the ground lease that was signed about a year ago allows for these, where there's joint projects, where the city has a project, construction project, and that's along their pipeline, that we do an IGA to construct those jointly. There's a lot of detail in the staff report, and I thought I'd just point out some of the main points of the IGA. So the city will, is responsible for the design of the road and the supporting utilities. Willamette Water Supply is responsible for the design of the pipeline. The city will put together a joint bid document set to be bid for construction, and then the city will also be responsible for management and contracting with the selected contractor for the joint construction project. Willamette Water Supply will reimburse the city for any costs associated with the water line construction. And then also the, the, the Willamette Water Supply will pay for 100% of the construction costs of the water line, and then they also, as part of the original ground lease agreement, they're responsible for anything that is, any roadway improvements that are above the pipeline, and that's, we calculated that as 21.6% of the roadway costs. So we, yes, and there was a lot of discussion over that .6, so. I know there was, so that's the main points of the IGA. There were a couple of questions submitted about why is the water line depth allowed to go below the eight feet and reduce to six feet per the ground lease? And I thought this image would help show, this is the depth of the city sewer line that's, that's needed to serve that Coffee Creek, Bassalt Creek, future development. And you can see it's pretty deep at 19 feet. And then the storm system is also, needs to be about 15 feet deep to serve that same area. So if we were to require per the ground lease, the, the water line to be eight feet deep, it would force these, our utilities to need to be deeper, and we just can't cert, we wouldn't be able to serve that area. Those utilities can't go deeper than, than that because they need gravity to work, right? So there's, there's only so much depth that those utilities can, can be put down, so. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Okay, council questions? Councilor Stevens.
Could you go to the previous slide, please? So underneath where it says water line work only on the right-hand side, is that Day Road?
Oh yeah, this is Day Road right here. Yeah. So the 124th Avenue, the pipeline that was built with that project ends right here, and they're connecting into it.
So I'm more concerned rather than with the pipeline is the road improvements. How is, how is that gonna be signaled at that intersection where those three, is it, three roads are coming together?
Sure, so the, the project's been split into three phases. The, this first phase is constructing the roadway improvements right up to the intersection, but short of them. There's a second phase where that is the intersection, and those roads would be reconfigured to make that intersection work, so.
So we're not doing that right now?
We're not doing that right now.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Councilor Ackable?
I had had the previous question about the eight feet versus the six feet deep.
Right.
And I appreciate your explanation this evening. I think that previously I had understood that the eight feet deep was kind of a benchmark that allowed for space on top.
Right.
For city utilities to be placed.
Right.
And so I was concerned that if we would be forfeiting that, you know, how that would affect our ability in the future.
Right.
So, but I'm understanding correctly then that it has to be below the, the big pipe, regardless.
Right.
So that is the motivation then, to raise it up to six feet.
Right, right. But there's still enough space on top of the pipeline, 'cause the utilities, the utilities are usually between three to five feet deep, so there's still enough space above the pipeline for those other utilities.
And what are, like, what, what would those utilities be? When would they come into play? How do they work or not work with these, the one that we've got now, the 14.7 and the 19.6?
So with the Garden Acres Road project, we're installing water line, city water line, fiber, city fiber, and then all of the franchise utilities like power, cable, phone, they're all getting installed with the roadway project. And they all cross over the top of the pipeline.
So that's above, that's our frosting layer.
Right.
On the top, right? Okay, and then we have the large water pipe.
Pipeline, right.
And then we have.
And then our storm and sewer.
Stormwater and sewer is below that.
Below that, right.
Okay, that kinda helps me understand the, the multiple layers that we have in play here.
Right, and you know, if you go back and look at the ground lease, there, you know, there was this understanding that the sewer in this area needed to be deep, so there's provisions in the ground lease that talk about, you know, being able to adjust that minimum depth based on the needs of the sewer.
I remember there was, yeah, but I didn't quite understand. And why does it have to be that deep? Or is, I don't know if that's something.
Sure.
You can explain to somebody without the engineering background, but.
So to be able to serve Bassalt Creek, it's really flat. The Coffee Creek area is really flat.
Okay.
So to be able to get the utilities out to Bassalt Creek, they need to be deep. Does that?
Because we have this over a long way?
Right.
Is it like this, right?
Yeah, you have to have slope, right, right, on the pipe?
Right, okay.
And to be able to get it out that far.
Okay.
And to be able to serve those large properties.
Right, that would have bigger needs or bigger demands. Okay, so then that helps us get the angle right.
Right, yes, right.
Okay.
Right.
Thank you. That helps clarify, yeah.
Is, is the Big Pipe already along Graham's Ferry from that juncture that was on your other slide on up north?
Yeah, it's already there.
So how deep is it at the?
That one, I believe, is, oh, I'm just looking at the hasboots for that. I wanna say it was eight feet, eight feet deep along there. But once we get past Day Road, the sewer can get shallow, because the sewer stays deep along Day Road. Let me bring up the map. So the, the reason that the sewer needs to be so deep is to get up to Day Road, and then the sewer goes all the way out to Boone's Ferry Road. And that's why it needs to be so deep. To get, once you get here going north, the sewer can get shallower, because there's a lot of, the, the ground starts rising up quicker, it's not so flat. And so the, we did an entire sewer analysis in this area to, to make sure we were getting the right depths on these sewer lines.
And what happens on the southern connector end when we build Kinsman Road's section of the Big Pipe?
On, which section?
Hooked to the southern end of this.
Oh, to 95th?
Okay.
Where it goes down 95th. Yeah, it's back to eight feet deep. But the, the sewer and the storm are already in 95th Avenue, so they're designing around those. These are all being designed together, if that makes sense.
Well, it did not intuitively make sense, no. Councilor Leahy?
So, did I, maybe I missed this, you already said it, but, so there's no lift stations or pump stations necessary for serving both either, either of these areas?
No.
Bassalt or Coffee Creek? They're all gravity flow out, okay.
Yeah, the, the sewer analysis that we just finished with Murray Smith, we were able to eliminate all of the pump stations in this area.
Well, that's a significant.
That's a big savings.
Thing, a big savings construction-wise, but also maintenance, ongoing operations to not have lift stations.
So a big part of the discussion that the council had in reaching these agreements with the Water District and Hillsborough was to protect the city long range. We're not talking 20 years, we're talking 100 years. So how many flying drone magnetic levitation devices and others are gonna have to be in that right-of-way sometime in the next 100 years? When I look back to 1919, when there was virtually no paved road west of the Mississippi outside of a major city, you know, and I would be looking forward to today trying to project what our needs are gonna be, I suspect we would've been kinda far off. And I think that looking forward 100 years might well be true. I worry that we're not preserving enough for future unknowns if we don't maintain all the capacity in the right-of-way that we possibly can. If it's eight feet deep north of there, and it's eight feet deep south of there, but all of a sudden this section has gotta be six feet, I, I don't intuit how that makes sense.
Right. It's, it's hard to explain without seeing a full map of the, of the, how the sewer works. I can try and explain it, but the sewer does not follow Ritter Road, the water line does. The sewer continues south and goes, follows the railroad line. So once you get past this point, the, the sewer doesn't become a conflict with the water line. And as I explained before, once you get north of Day Road, it doesn't become a conflict anymore, 'cause the sewer can be shallower to be able to serve the Bassalt Creek area. So it really is just this segment where the, the six feet, reducing the, the depth to six feet would apply. And it's really to be able to serve these large properties with sewer.
You have horizontal drainage have to get from the eastern side of that all the way over to that six-foot, I mean, no, to the, the sewer's way down below that, you know, so. Councilor West?
I'm by no means a sewer expert or an engineer. In, in the city's professional opinion, is there any negative impact to being at the six-foot mark or future issues that we might have, because it's not at that normal place that we would put a sewer at eight feet? Or is this completely functional and safe?
No, I, I think we have looked at it and believe that the, the six feet is adequate. You know, one of the things in the ground, I know where the eight-foot came from, that is our typical depth of a sewer line. And once you get into the south part of the city, most sewers are at eight feet deep. Well, in the, in the ground lease, it talks, you know, it know, it, we knew that the sewers in this area were gonna be deeper, so it, there's provisions in the ground lease that talk about being able to adjust that, that depth as needed, once we determine how deep the sewers are in this area.
Are there any future potential concerns that you can think of by making this adjustment?
I mean, I can't think, not at this time. Like I said, most utilities are between that three to five foot zone. There's enough space left with the six-foot depth.
So is our, sorry to cut you off, is our eight-foot the, kind of a, even being more precautious and like being, and taking, providing more space than normal? 'Cause you said three to five feet is standard.
Right, well, that's considering, the eight-foot is considering that's how deep our sewers normally are. In this case, they're much deeper.
So we have room for leeway?
Yeah.
We have?
In this area, we do.
Thank you.
If we have to go under the 66-inch line to install or repair our facilities, how does that work?
So we're installing with each of the laterals, if you, let me go back to this drawing. So this is, this is a cross-section of the road, right, of Garden Acres Road, and this is the, the main line kinda going in and out of the, of the screen. And this is the lateral.
Excuse me, is, is the right-left scale accurate, as well as the depth scale accurate in this picture?
It's to scale the, the vertical and the horizontal scales are probably not equal, if that makes sense.
All right, so are any of those gonna be essentially under or adjacent to under the 66-inch line?
So the, the laterals for, that serve the properties will be under the 66-inch line. What we're doing is installing casings wherever it crosses, so if, if a property owner needs to get in there to repair that line, that, they won't have to dig under the, the 66-inch line, there'll be a casing there or sleeve to be able to take that pipe in and out.
Well, that's clever. That's very clever.
Just for clarity on, on the ground lease.
Yeah.
So what the ground lease did, it actually contemplated that on this road, the sewer lines would be deep. And it's, and what it provides is that they may have to, in fact, go deeper in order to accommodate our lines, because the provision of the ground lease is that everything they do is supposed to be below us, not above us. That being said, there is language in our sole discretion to do, to modify it to be less, less or more. I mean, so we could make them actually go under our line, and that's, that's the way the language was written, actually. But certainly, if this makes sense for the city, then it can be done that way as well.
And we, we had some discussions with Willamette Water Supply about going deeper. That would put them about 25 feet deep and just not, they, they, their initial response was, we'll need to find a different route. And keep in mind, they're also paying for almost a quarter of this roadway. So without them, we can't pay for the roadway at this time either, so. I think, you know, the project team and Willamette Water Supply worked together to find a solution that works for both the city and for them, and we were able, you know, luckily, we were able to find this space for them to fit into. You know, if there was another utility that would've been in the way, then, then they, they would likely would've had to find a different route, so.
Okay, any other council questions? So you're asked, being asked to vote on approving this for tonight. My concerns, I voiced that I think that we need to be very, very conservative long-term in protecting the right-of-way, and I don't want us to do something that looks good for the next 20 years to the, and ignore what may be needed beyond that. So I'm, I'm, I was part of the decision on these negotiations. Council asked that those standards be put in there, and they were negotiated, and that eight-foot depth standard is in the agreement, and we need to be willing to stand on it wherever it protects the city, is my perspective. You've made a good case for this particular section. It's gonna be hard if the next section that comes forward also needs an exception. Councilor Leahy?
I would just say, I, I'm, I mean, I, I agree we have to protect the right-of-way, absolutely, but I kinda see these things in different categories. In other words, sewer and stormwater are not pressure lines, so, so it's safer for them to be way down there. They're, they're not, let me just say, this is what I presume, they're not as likely to need maintenance at the level that a pressure line does.
Right.
Which is the water, our water lines, their water lines, gas lines, those are pressure lines. And the other, and the other stuff that's there, that all the signalized stuff, the electrical and cable and, and the wiry stuff, phones and, do we still do landline phones? It seems like those, when you look out into the future, a lot of the electronic stuff is gonna be moving to wireless. I mean, I mean, for good or ill, the 5G thing we've discussed is gonna be moving to satellite streaming kind of stuff, or I, that's the way I would see it moving. If you're looking out 100 years, it will be less hardwire and, and more signals in the air stuff, who knows? But, but, you know, I, I, I would keep those, those kind of three categories as, they're, they're kinda different things, they don't just come up as a mixture and we can just fit them all in there.
Just one question.
Councilor Stevens?
Just a clarification, this isn't a pressurized water line, though, is it?
This is, the 66 isn't?
No, it's, it's raw water, that's one of the, that's one of the reasons why they switched it originally started off to be.
It's gonna be clean water and then deep pumping, yeah.
It's pressurized.
It's pressurized to get it up to the plant.
Yeah, 'cause it's going uphill, so it has to have some pressure.
But not like our water.
Right, yeah. Our water.
All right, we good then?
Yeah.
Thank you very much, Mr. Weigle. Leading us to Hathaway, Willow Creek, and Landover Parks, Mr. McCarty.
Set a different seat, maybe I'll get less questions that way. Honorable mayor and city council, tonight, we kinda have a, a unique situation with three parks in town, Landover, Willow Creek, Hathaway. They're all listed as city parks. Hathaway's actually on city property. Landover and Willow Creek has been difficult, I would say, to try to find exactly a deed, a, actually who owns the property, all of that's been hard, and this is back in 1999, so it's kinda been trying to find all that. The city attorney has worked really countless hours on this to try to help me. This land was dedicated in 99, and certain land was for use as public park, but the responsibility of the maintenance of the park would be by the HOAs. And part of the unique situation back then is there was no Parks and Rec Department, I mean, until, what, seven, eight, nine years ago? And currently, these parks are, they're dangerous, the equipment is out of date, pretty much unusable, and with the help of the city attorney, staff had contacted all of the HOAs and the boards and property managers and anybody else that might be involved in this, and all parties are on board of, of the city taking over these, maintenance of these parks, the Parks and Rec Department. We've researched budgetary issues, problems, and it's minor, as far as we're concerned. And we think for the benefit of the community, it's been a nice thing for the city to take these parks over for the kids and the people out there. We can do it for, like I said, minimal costs, and we can also install new playgrounds out there with money that's in this year's, this fiscal year's budget, so we could have them in place. I don't wanna say in place for sure by July 1st, but we could have it out of this year's budget, and so that money's already in the budget, it's not new money we're asking for. I don't know if anybody, the city attorney has anything to add, but we have researched this for a year?
It's, it's been a challenge.
Yeah.
I mean, it was, it was back in the day when people wrote resolutions and said the land will be deeded, and then the follow-up to actually do it didn't happen, or there, a deed was done, but it wasn't recorded, and trying to find it in somebody's file or somebody's drawer is kind of what we went through in going through this, and so what turned out was, there was one that was actually recorded, one that, a deed that was done, but was never recorded, and then a third one where there was actually a dispute on who owned the property, and it went to court, and the, and the property owner at the time won the court case, and was, and the land was still theirs now. So that property owner has, has now agreed that they will deed us the land in exchange for, exchange for taking over the maintenance, because I'm sure they found that maintaining a park is not really all that fun. Some people think it is, but not all people do.
And, and you could probably see by the different pictures in there, the parks are fairly small. I mean, they're all approximately an acre, so it wouldn't take a lot of time out there. But again, we just think that everybody in this town deserves nice parks, nice places to play, safe places to play, and it's, actually, we think it's the right thing to do.
We have talked in the last couple of budget cycles about the approaching challenge of budgeting for the Villebois parks that were contractually obligated to take over from the developer out there, and to what extent the HOAs are involved out there. You don't see these three unexpected additions as being delaying or making those other acquisitions problematic?
I don't. I mean, we are taking over Piccadilly Park, I think it's May 15th, so it's right around the corner, and the Parks and Rec Department also took over the water features as of this next fiscal year. So do we need help, seasonals and things? Sure. Do we need help full-time? Sure. But is, again, the right thing to do, and is it gonna delay anything? No, sir, well not.
Okay. Other questions? Councilor Ackable?
I have a question, kind of related with the Villebois parks. While reviewing this, I also, you know, kind of was considering, okay, how can we avoid this sort of situation in the future? And the background you provided today helps explain the storyline of how this might've occurred without there being a Parks Department at the time when these were put into place. I know that several of the Villebois parks are going to be, you know, absorbed or by the city in time, but not all, I believe, if that's correct. There are some small pocket parks that are not.
Correct.
And as, you know, we continue to develop neighborhoods and things are put into place, I wonder if there are situations where, you know, even a very small park isn't necessarily going to be absorbed by the city? If there's things that we can do to put into place so we don't end up in instances where the equipment is unsafe and not ADA compliant? Because I agree, those are values that we absolutely want to have in place.
Yeah.
For, you know, all the community members here. So that was, you know, kind of one question or consideration that I had after reviewing this.
Yeah, and that's just forward-thinking and looking to the future of what we can do and see what other places are doing. And you're right about Villebois, because the city will take. And you're right about Villebois, because the city will take over basically one through eight.
Right, the large ones.
Yeah. And Piccadilly, I think, is four. I mean, if you put the numbers on it, and so we still have a few to go. And I don't think we take another one over until '21, and then we have a few after that. But it is worth looking at all that to see what the city's, you know, where we should get involved, and maybe where we should not get involved. I mean, that's always something we can look at.
Okay.
I guess, yes, ma'am?
I just want to kind of add on to Mike's point there. I think one of the things that we can do in the future, as we kind of move forward with these Villebois parks, is to be a resource to the HOAs if they have questions about playground equipment. Not that we're going to take that over, but making sure that they understand that there's some maintenance associated when you have a neighborhood park and that you're taking that over.
And standards.
And there's standards in all of that. I think that's a question that when these parks are developed, that certainly Mike's staff could make sure that they relay that information to them.
And the other thing is probably having good paperwork, like the city attorney talked about, that maybe he wasn't there a long time ago, so.
Counselor Lee?
Can I ask about, on a related topic, about Maury's Landing Park? That's not ours, right?
No, ma'am, it's not ours.
It belongs to the Homeowners Association.
Correct.
Right. So that one is not on a schedule of acquisition.
No, and that is not listed as a city park on our.
No, I see that, it isn't there. It's, of course, it looks like a city park and has play structures and stuff, so it's kind of, it's an odd situation, but it's not. So I just wanted to clarify that was the case.
Okay. If I'm remembering, Mr. McCarty, I think it's either Willow Creek or Landover that the trails were originally put in, in asphalt, not concrete, the walkways, and they are badly broken up and cracked and root pushed, and going to take a fair amount of work to make a viable city pathway through there.
Yes, and we have looked at those, and you're right, the tree roots have pushed those up where there's cracks and things like that. So those will be looked at as, I think you just mentioned, ADA or somebody, ADA issues, that's an ADA issue right there. And we have a few ADA issues that we're looking at, and we're trying to get ADA money every year to try to chip those off, and I think we'll get there.
Okay, we good?
And this is on the agenda tonight, too.
Yep. All right, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Canyon Creek land donation.
Kim, which one is it? This one. I think it's this one. Yeah, there we go. All right. Okay, good evening, Mayor, and members of the council. So yes, my name's Kerry Rappel, Natural Resources Manager, and here tonight to just discuss with you the potential land donation from a company called SKB, which owns the Parkway Business Center. So this is just a map of the property. This is in the far northwest corner of the old Xerox campus, so just to the east is Canyon Creek Park. Canyon Creek Road is along that eastern edge. To the north is Cisco Foods, so it sits, like I said, up in that far northwest corner of the property. So just a little bit of background, so SKB approached the city about providing this land donation. It's a 31-acre parcel, primarily made up of forest, so it's a mixed deciduous coniferous forest. It's a lovely, actually, piece of property to walk around on. I've had the opportunity to that a couple times now. It also has forested and emergent wetland, forested within that larger piece of forest, and then emergent wetland to the north. And then there's an unnamed creek that flows to the south. Eventually, that goes through the Mentor Campus, and then heads to the west and connects up with Coffee Lake Creek, so it's part of the Coffee Lake Creek drainage. To the north is the BPA power lines and easement, so that's part of the property they want to donate to the city, and there's some emergent wetland that's on that site. And in the late 1950s, the forest was logged, so a considerable number of the trees were removed. But over the last 60 years, it's regenerated really nicely. There's some really beautiful oak species, or oak specimens out there, some ash trees, and then some dug firs along the eastern edge. Surprisingly, it has pretty low invasive species cover. You walk around there, and it's just surprising to see how little there is in there, so very impressive. And just, it's a really unique natural area in terms of the city. There's probably only one other forest that's comparable to it, and that's in Villebois. So from that perspective, it's pretty impressive. So I've spent some time out there with Parks and Recreation staff. We've looked at a number of things out there, just to make sure that we're comfortable with what's there, what we're going to be getting as a donation. And then we also had an environmental site assessment done by Anderson Geological. They didn't find anything in the way of contamination or hazardous substances, and they didn't recommend that we do anything else in terms of a Phase II, so it's a pretty clean site. So I know you were interested in some budget impacts, so I worked with Parks and Rec and our engineering division. So from a capital improvement perspective, you have those three conceptual designs that they looked at as far as a trail alignment. Parks and Rec, they were interested in option one, or A, as they were called, and so this, yeah, option one, that shows potentially where some trails could be located within the forest and to the north within the BPA easement. And I've already started a conversation with BPA where we could potentially use their access road as part of that trail network, and we'll have to see where that goes. But, so this shows like a six-foot and a 10-foot width for that trail, and they did a quick estimate in terms of the cost for this option, and that includes materials and labor, so it'd be approximately $34,000. The other two options were a little less than that, I think $28,000 and $27,000. And then I had the engineering division put together what would we need to do if we want to connect Canyon Creek Park with this new property, and it would be an enhanced crosswalk, a little bit of trail that would be added to do that. And right now, we're looking at a fairly significant amount. I guess what I would say is that we could certainly have the trails within the forested area and easement and not connect it initially to Canyon Creek Park, so that might be an interim step that we might want to look at. But we'll have to certainly look at this in terms of our capital budgeting and see where we're at with, you know, our funding. And then they looked at Parks and Rec, just some annual maintenance costs, and just roughly, they thought that would be pretty inexpensive in terms of, you know, maybe $4,000 to $5,000 a year, something like that. Some litter removal, trail maintenance, like I said, invasive species aren't a big issue. And so the next steps, what we need to do is bring this back to the council on April 15th. We would be bringing a resolution for you to actually take action in regards to us moving forward with the acceptance of the land donation. Then we'd have to work out an agreement with SKB in terms of how we go about transferring that property. One of the steps that would have to take place is SKB would have to initiate a partition plat in order to have that property, you know, actually partitioned out. So that might take about, maybe up to six months to do that. There'd be a process through our own land use approval. And then if that all works out and everything's acceptable, that we could take ownership of the property. And then we could look at, in terms of the future, how we might plan and implement some of these improvements, whether it's the onsite trail or that enhanced crosswalk across Canyon Creek Road. So that's about it. I can take any questions that you have?
Yes, thank you. Counselor West?
Can we see option one on the trail?
I didn't, actually, I'm sorry, I didn't put that one into my PowerPoint, but you do have copies in your staff report.
I thought I just.
Oh, option one again, I'm sorry.
Option one, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, 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 no problem.
Let me just go back to that. There it goes.
Okay, so you gave three options.
Yes.
I like this option the best, for the record.
Sure.
I'm curious, as there's a large chunk of wooded area that has no trails to it, why? And why is this the shape and the way we decided to lay out the trail?
Mike, do you have any perspective on that? I don't know how much you worked with Tommy on. I received these from Parks and Rec, I didn't really have an opportunity to discuss them much with them, but.
And we would not be deciding on options tonight, right?
No, this is just, it's illustrative, to give you some information and to move forward.
I know, one of the problems was on the bottom left corner there where there's nothing, as Mr. West said, there's like almost a ravine, a creek going through there, and you'd have to actually make a boardwalk to go over to get to the other side.
The creek kind of comes down through here.
And we thought that would be very expensive for one, and harder to maintain, and it could be quite difficult. This one avoids that whole area, the whole creek.
We, okay, yeah, we have a similar boardwalk in Graham's Oak that is amazing, and I like, and it adds a whole other experience.
Metro Government put a bunch of money into making that happen.
Thank you, Metro. But it's cost prohibitive.
But we have to come back anyway, we could still look at how much that might be and go from there, too, when we come back.
Other thing is about continuity of habitat for wildlife and whether they can move unobstructed. You know, a lot of times, they'll move along the waterways, I mean, I'm not wildlife expert, but.
He is.
Yeah, we got one of them.
No, you're making a lot of sense, yes.
All right.
Did that answer your question?
Absolutely, yeah.
Counselor Stevens, question?
No, a couple suggestions. I think if, when, once it's developed and we have trails in, whatever we decide to do, I think it'd be fun to get the people who are using it, or maybe the whole city, to name that creek, since we have an unnamed creek.
Sure.
So just, and get the citizens involved, get some interest there.
I like that.
And the other thing is, as in regards to the crosswalk, maybe it would be good to see what happens organically across that? I mean, where do people cross? Do we have, do we have issues? Maybe it even comes from the community that says, we need a crosswalk here, rather than just throwing one up where we think it should be.
Sure.
You know, people create their own paths, and if people are crossing all at the same time to meet a trailhead, let's see if, let's see if we need that, to spend that money.
Yeah, this is a very preliminary look at it.
Yeah, 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 I get that. So we're talking way down the road.
Not like that. One more, one more.
Counselor West?
Do we, where would people park? I mean, it looks like if you want to go jogging, running, walk their dogs, or enjoy it, from, if we come all the way from Villebois, from a distant neighborhood, or Charbonne, or where would we be, is there a plan for parking?
Well, currently, the only parking really is right here, across the street. These are spaces available to anyone using Canyon Creek Park. So I guess conceivably, we could look at, you know, if we could work with BPA, if it's feasible to maybe have parking on the site, I don't know if that's, if that's going to work or not. But at this point in time, this is the only parking that's available. So it's just a few parking spaces.
It looks like there's a street stub on that side.
Yeah.
That has never been utilized.
Has never been utilized, yeah. I'm not sure what the intent was with that. This was certainly going to be the Weedeman Road connection, so.
All right, thank you, Mike. Counselor Lee?
A quick thing, where does this creek cross Interstate 5? And how much of it is culverted?
It's, it actually goes through where the Drury Trail development is, so it goes through a large culvert under I-5 there, and then it comes out into the middle tributary of Coffee Lake Creek, and goes by Old Castle.
Yeah, it just seems like to get under.
It's a huge culvert.
I-5 and under Bowburg, and under Boone's Ferry.
It goes underground, it goes underground, under some of those properties near Bowburg. You can't even see it.
And then it comes out through a pipe, or it comes out through, a pipe directly in the ditch?
Into, there's a ditch just to the west of Bowburg Road, it comes out, discharges into that, daylight's there.
Okay.
And then from that point, then it goes under Bowburg again in a culvert, and then it comes out and then flows over to the wetlands. Yeah, and then under Kinsman, too.
Under Kinsman.
Yeah, it goes through actually the large culvert.
So then it comes out in a spill of some sort on the other side of Kinsman, and goes overland to the creek? It doesn't, it doesn't end up in Sealy Ditch right off?
No, no.
I mean, the pipe doesn't go that far.
No.
So it must just spill on the other side of Kinsman.
Yeah. I think it actually goes into that old north-south ditch along the young property there. I can't remember that exactly, but it comes out in that area.
I'll have to go look at it.
Yeah. Yeah, let me know if you need somebody.
Find where it comes out.
Okay, all right, thank you very much. Basalt Creek Comp Plan and Transportation System Plan Amendments, please. Ms. Rappel?
Good evening, Mayor Knapp and councilors. I'm Kimberly Rappel, Associate Planner with the city. Before you tonight on the public hearing, or for public hearing on the agenda, are the Basalt Creek-related Comprehensive Plan and Transportation System Plan Amendments. As you'll recall, Miranda Bateshell and I were here in February, February 21st, we presented an overview of what those amendments are, along with the UPAA amendment that was before you at the March 4 meeting. We haven't, the information that was provided in that packet is the same, nothing has changed. We did have one small edit to add a project cost estimate into the transportation system plan. So other than that, the materials before you tonight are the same as what was presented in February. Available to answer any questions you might have now.
Counsel, questions? I feel like we're making progress on Basalt Creek.
Yes, I did have a question.
Counselor Ackerman?
No, I'm trying to find it. Find my notes on it. Let me talk around it until I can find it. Somewhere in the packet, in the presentation on this, was information, you know, there was a line, and hopefully I can find the actual page, but if not, I'll come back to it. Here we go, future connections with SMART. Okay, it was on page 120 of our packet, page four of seven of the Exhibit A. Does that help, is that helpful for you? But there is a line about the roadway improvements will include enhanced bike and pedestrian facilities and connections to the future SMART transit system. That just kind of, that line just got me thinking about, I mean, as this whole area develops and grows and changes, eventually, ability for SMART to, you know, to access and provide service in the area, that'll change down the road. I wonder at this point, so it's, you know, not so much about this actual proposal, but just looking down the road, do we, when will we know it's time? I guess, do we have like a threshold already kind of put into place of when we'll need to have SMART be a more active part of servicing that area?
Sure, and I don't want to speak for SMART since they're not here, but one of the things to keep in mind is that particularly in Basalt Creek, the service provider right now is still Triment. And so I think there are some, some technical details that will have to get worked out in terms of actually having that change so that SMART becomes the service provider. But I do think, you know, like we've looked at in other parts of the city, as we grow and we start seeing development, we try to take into account how we provide transit service and transit facilities in that area. So I think, you know, once we start seeing development proposals, certainly we'll be accounting for providing, you know, bus shelters or anything like that. As for actually starting that conversation, you know, I think that's a really good point. Miranda, I don't know if you have any additional thoughts?
Yeah, Miranda Bateshell, Planning Director for the city of Wilsonville. The only additional thing I would note is that it is something that SMART's paying attention to. There's a process involved, which does involve the state as well as our partners at Triment. And I know our director at SMART has begun those conversations, knowing that this is an area of growth for the city.
Okay, so it's already kind of in movement in some ways?
Yes.
There's no guaranteed outcome.
Yeah.
It is a negotiation and a process, and we don't have any certainty of achieving the outcome that Wilsonville would like to have, but it's a question of persistence and persuasiveness, and maybe some horse trading along.
Okay, thank you, thank you both.
You're welcome.
Other questions? I think we're okay then. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Change order for Memorial Park Dog Park and Community Garden Parking Lot Project.
Yes, here I am again, okay. Good evening, good evening again, yes. So yes, this is for the Memorial Park.
I think the subject was parking lots the last time we saw you.
Probably was. I've become the parking lot man, yes, yes. I've grown more fond of asphalt, I can tell you that.
As a natural resources.
As the natural resources manager, yes. So I'll just run through this real quick, because this is the same presentation I'll be giving in the meeting, but I wanted to give you some information. So you know all of this, most of you do, this was primarily for Counselor West, too, because I know he hasn't seen some of this, but I'm not sure. I can wait, or just go on, or whatever you'd like me to do, so. Okay, so as you know, we had the Memorial Park Master Plan. It set in place some of these uses, active and passive. There were three phases that were looked at. So this is the first phase, where we're doing, you know, the access to the community garden. We're doing the new parking lot. There's going to be a new restroom, where there was a pad built with this project for that restroom. And then ultimately, the dog park is going to get relocated just to the south of where the new parking lot is. This shows you just really quickly what that parking lot looks like, and if you go out there today, it really looks like this. So it's almost done. But we've run into a few things that we needed to address through change orders. So the reason we're here is because you awarded the contract last September. Anytime where we have change orders that exceed a total of 15% of that original contract amount, we have to come back to council, get approval. So we're at that point where they've gone over the 15%. Basically, these change orders had to do with some constructability issues. One of the big issues we ran into was there are pretty soft soils out there. And so we had to do more over excavation and the additional gravel to stabilize those areas so we could pave over them and have an expectation that the pavement wouldn't be a problem over time. We did run into some grade challenges, where there were some things that kind of changed between the original plan and what we saw in the field. So that led to some additional paving, some curb where we would have had wheel stops, and then a little bit of a rock wall. Oops, sorry, I'm getting ahead of myself here. And then we had to make an adjustment in terms of the electrical connection. It was a little further to the east, and that was through a process of working with PGE and what they wanted to see in terms of the project. And then we had a couple changes in terms of scope. As you know, we're looking at this new access coming down off of Colby Lane, which uses the bridge. So there were some additional steps that we had to take in terms of making that bridge suitable, suitable for vehicular use, which were basically some approaches to the bridge. And then, as we got into the project, we saw that there was an area that we wanted to add some concrete, that was around the wellhouse. And there was a little bit of a rethinking of the bathroom. We actually are going to end up saving money on that bathroom, but we upsized the water line a little bit to accommodate that. So this just shows you some pictures associated with that. There was a little bit of concrete, like I said, around the wellhouse. We actually had to bore under the community garden to get this connection for the electrical, because it had shifted further to the east. There's that little rock wall that I mentioned, that's right adjacent to the fence for the community garden. And these show those approaches for the bridge itself. So, so in a nutshell, there's a photo. I stood on top of the stockpile today and took that, so it gives you a nice little perspective.
Okay, council, questions? Just a little bit of an overrun in price, but we've got all the features that we had planned on and prioritized for this particular project.
Yeah, I think you're going to like it.
I'm not seeing any questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Trowha, that brings us to the end of our scheduled work session items pending the move. Do you have any other comments or things we should hear before we take a break?
No, I don't, except, is this on? Except for that, we have made those modifications to the council agenda. At 7, 6:30 now, at 7 o'clock, we will be convening in the council chambers to continue our work session, and that item is a briefing and update on the recent fire in Villavoh. And right after that item, then we will go right into your formal council meeting at that time. And during that formal council meeting, as you always have on your agenda, there is an opportunity for public comment. You will likely have members from the public that will be at the work session item on the Villavoh Fire Update. And so we can let them know that under the formal council meeting, there will be an opportunity for public comment. So that will be the opportunity for them to provide any comments or ask any questions. And at that point, they will have heard all of the presentations from our various stakeholders involved in the incident.
So we're anticipating that that discussion on the Villavoh Fire may take half an hour. We did not publicize business until 7:30, right? So if we don't expend the time, we'll have to delay start of the meeting?
Yes, yeah, the meeting is scheduled to start at 7:30. My guess is that you'll use all of that time up, and maybe more. So you probably want to start really promptly at 7:00.
Okay. Anything else? All right.
Can we start earlier than 7:00?
No, it's publicized, I mean, it was in the press that way.
Yeah, it's been in the press that way, and we've got, any members of the public are, know that it's going to start at 7:00 o'clock, and then we've also, the stakeholders that are going to be here are preparing for a 7:00 o'clock meeting, so.
All right, so we got about half an hour, just about, if we'd like to take a little break between now and reconvening downstairs just before 7:00 o'clock, we'd appreciate it. We'll call work session, well, we'll just.
Continue, you're going to continue your work session?
Continue work session downstairs. We're breaking at 6:25.
I will call back to order the Wilsonville City Council for our continued work session from the work we did upstairs, the council now, at 7:02. And we have arranged with various agencies and emergency responders to be with us to present us some background. I would like to invite city manager pro tem Gina Troja, who has been kind of in charge of staff coordination here through this last difficult time, to proceed with that. And I just want to say to everybody that I think the whole community shares a concern about the impacts of the fire that we had. The fact that nobody died and nobody was severely hurt is just huge. We have, in Wilsonville's history, seen fires that were much less significant in size, but in which people and children died. And part of the reason that the state has now rules that say all multifamily units have to be sprinkled is because of the efforts that were centered around Wilsonville. Former Mayor Lehan and our former city building official Martin Brown that went on a crusade to get that change made at the state level after we experienced some deaths in an apartment complex in Wilsonville with a much smaller fire than we're talking about here. So I'm very pleased that we did not lose anybody in spite of the huge impact and displacement of peoples. But I won't talk. Gina, would you please go ahead with our information that we brought forward for the people tonight?
Absolutely. So, thank you, Mayor and Council. I am Gina Troja. Just for those of you that are in the audience, I am serving right now as the city manager pro tem and have been helping kind of coordinate the response to the recent fire that we had yesterday in the Villebois neighborhood. I want to first of all say thank you to all of you that are here in attendance as it relates to that matter. I share, as well as the city council shares, the concerns of what had occurred. And, you know, it was certainly a tragic event. And just you showing up tonight certainly is a sign that you care about your neighborhood, you care about your community, and you care about what's moving forward in the future. So, tonight, we are prepared with our partners, with Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, with Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, who also serves as our own police department for the city of Wilsonville, as well as city staff to provide some information to the city council to answer, I think, questions that have been brought up in the last couple of days and to provide information to the general public and for those of you in the audience. So, with that, we've got Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue. I'm going to have them come forward right now. And then, following Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, we are going to have our building official for the city of Wilsonville speak a little bit about kind of the status of the structures in Villebois. And then, we will have Martin Montalba, who is our Public Works Operations Manager and also serving right now as our acting Public Works Director. So, with that, I'm going to turn it over to these fine individuals.
Good evening, Mayor, councilors. My name is Derek Weiss. I am Assistant Chief with Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue. Why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah, hi. I'm Steve Forster. I'm the Fire Marshal with Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue.
Robert Wirps, Chief of Police here. One thing that I would, for full disclosure, I'm also a Villebois resident, and I have been for four years now. So this is my community too, that we responded to. I want to just frame up a little bit about what we had. So, 1:00 AM on March 31st was when the call was dispatched to a fire in Villebois. There was off-duty firefighters that were alerted that also live in Villebois that showed up on scene of the fire, and they were knocking on doors and calling 911. And they even called the incident commander who was responding to the scene in Villebois. And based on that information, the call was upgraded from a simple task force type fire to a three-alarm fire en route, which is fairly uncommon. In my career with Twalton Valley Fire and Rescue, well over 25 years, we've had three similar type fires, large fires. And they all have one thing in common. There was a structure at its most vulnerable point, under construction, wood exposed, four stories tall, large, 36 units, I believe, that caught fire. And because a building of that size, that type, that was a rapidly moving fire that got large very fast. There was a lot of radiant heat that came out of that fire. Firefighters arrived, they found cars on fire, buildings on fire. Of course, that building was on fire. And I think you pointed this out perfectly, Mayor, the fact that no one, no firefighter, no resident was injured is nothing short of amazing. That's not what we typically find. And so, for that, I am very grateful and very thankful for the work that people did, not only residents, but the city, the sheriff's office, and Polygon Homes for their efforts to rebuild the following day as well. So, this fire was a little bit different, and I will turn it over to our Fire Marshal to talk a little bit about what we've been doing since the fire occurred.
Hi, good evening. So, just a quick update on the status of the fire investigation till this point. So, we have, TVFNR has dedicated three fire investigators full-time to this incident. We had investigators respond the night of the incident. They worked the entire night, all the way through, collecting witness interviews, photographs, other evidence and information from the fire scene. We immediately brought in Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, which is protocol for us on a fire of this size and magnitude. And I can say honestly that Clackamas County Sheriff has been, or, I'm sorry, Wilsonville Police and Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, they have been absolutely fantastic. So they also brought in extensive resources to this scene. I can honestly say in my 17 years with TVFNR that this is the most well-resourced investigation I have ever been a part of. So you absolutely can have confidence in the investigation, the resources, and ultimately the outcome of it. We're moving as fast as we can, but also carefully as well. So, I do want to emphasize that this is not a criminal scene at this point, but on a fire of this size and complexity, we handle it as if it were. So we can't go back and undo things, and so we have to treat a scene like this carefully. We treat it as though it potentially may be a criminal scene. So that will be processing of warrants, be securing the scene, be very tight restrictions on who can get in and out. We will collect and preserve all evidence as if it were potentially a crime scene. Again, we do not know or have information in any way that it is at this point, but that is simply the protocol and steps that we take along the way. So, in addition, what you'll see, and really you'll start to see more of it tomorrow, you'll see a lot of the investigative resources at the actual scene. We did a lot of the planning and preliminary work today. Primarily, we coordinated with Clackamas County District Attorney's Office, Wilsonville PD, Clackamas County Sheriff's Office. OSP has an arson unit. They bring extensive resources. And we also have brought in Bureau of Alcohol, Tobacco, and Firearms. They have some of the best fire investigation resources in the country. They have a fire lab, fantastic resources. You will start to see all of them at the scene tomorrow. We're conducting a joint investigation with all of the agencies involved, and we will provide updates and press releases certainly as best we can and as fast as we can in that process.
Thanks. I want to say I really admire these guys. They did a fantastic job containing that fire. That was nothing short of an inferno, and the fact that so little collateral damage happened is miraculous. Nice job, guys. Yes, moving forward, one of the big things we'll see is large command posts from the ATF and OSP and a lot of the partnerships. We wanted to bring in the best guys from anywhere that could help us out, because we just want to do this absolutely right and get to the bottom of the cause. So that's what we're doing moving forward. Any questions?
Well, thank you. Council, any questions for the fire officials or our police officials? Everybody's going to be asking me, how soon will we hear the results of the investigation? And I know that's unanswerable. Is there any, I mean, we're talking weeks, months, any way to tell?
So, yeah, we certainly can't guarantee anything. So what we presume and are tentatively planning for is that the physical investigation at the scene, we are hoping will be wrapped up this week. Again, another one of the reasons we brought in the amount of resources that we did is so that we can do this fast, and we know the community wants to get back in, clean things up, start the rebuilding process. So we hope to have the physical site investigation portion done this week. But then, I really, it's very difficult to provide an estimate as far as for the other aspects of the investigation. Oftentimes, when a building is this damaged, or multiple buildings this damaged, it often becomes sort of an investigation, witness-driven type investigation, and so that can, that can take time.
Take a long time, yeah.
So, all of the occupancies around the fire structure in the middle, we met with the residents this evening, and we let them know that we released all of those from the fire department to the owners. So those have been released back. We're just coordinating off the main fire structure area right now. The rest has been released.
Okay. Counselor West?
Just while fighting the fire and the difficulties with that, people keep telling me it looked apocalyptic, and those pictures look like the mouth of hell. And we, there's just some concern that did, was, I don't think that fire's easy to fight by any means, but when you guys had to take on that fire, were there anything that prohibited you from doing your job to the best of your abilities that made it difficult to maneuver and get to that fire, to really, to minimize even further the collateral damage of the surrounding properties or anything? Or, guys, there's rumors that trucks were damaged from the fire department and that you guys couldn't get to the fire adequately. Is any of that true, or can you speak to that?
I can speak to it. Nothing's been reported to me specifically to that. There was nothing out of the ordinary for arrival and extinguishment of the fire than any other fire like this. Granted, fairly rare fire of this magnitude, this size, but nothing has been reported to me out of the ordinary. You might recall when I did the State of the Fire District a little while ago, we talked about the change we had in our hoses and nozzle package. And honestly, those changes we made and the training we did directly related to our ability to extinguish this fire in 45 minutes. So, a lot of hard work, a lot of good work went in. I have not received any reports of anything other than that.
And what, I may add to that too, is as Chief Weiss mentioned in his introduction, that it's really, is an incident where the building is truly in its most vulnerable and really sort of most combustible standpoint. So, you had an entire structure, lightweight wood frame construction before it had sheet rock on it, fully framed. All the combustible materials are in there, but none of the partitions, none of the fire protection, none of the sheet rock yet. So it really is at a stage in its construction where fire can spread incredibly fast through that type of structure, particularly multi-story. And so, it will certainly look, you know, like, certainly will look like a war zone during that sort of incident at that phase. And because it's still fully sheathed and a roof on there, that also then prevents water from getting in. So again, it really is the most vulnerable sort of stage for a construction project, I would say, is one of the reasons why you saw such immense flame and heat damage.
Counselor Lehan?
Yes, I wanted to ask, as you know, Villebois is one of the first communities to be fully sprinkled for all the structures. And, and I know sprinklers are not an issue here because that building wasn't sprinkled, and the other buildings, the fire, sprinklers intended to confine the fire to the room of origin. And of course, there was no fire originating in any of these rooms. And yet, it seems like, I would be really interested in knowing what the sprinkler performance was in those other buildings, in those five houses, in any of the other apartment buildings, but particularly in those five houses. Did all the sprinklers go off, or all of them go off in the first two and maybe the third? Or was it, you know, obviously, once the heat got, and fire got into a room, then it's probably, it should have been setting off those sprinklers. But was that true in, it just seems like a, an opportunity for us to really evaluate how the sprinklers performed or didn't perform in that, in those examples that are right there, from the very hottest to the not as much. Is there, is that a piece of the data that we would be trying to get, is what happened with that?
Yeah, so, yes, we can have, I will ask our investigators to look into that aspect of it if they haven't already. Being that they were exposure fires, it's a little bit different, the analysis that goes into the investigation on those. We can certainly look at that. It is a little bit different too, in that the residential sprinkler designs are really, they're intended to be life safety systems. They're not in places like the attic where, and it does, it depends on the type of building, if it's the single-family versus the apartments. But the single-family homes, for example, our life safety systems are really designed to catch a fire that starts within the room itself. So in this case, where we have large exposure fires that come in and most likely went through siding, got up into attic, up into roof, there's no fire protection in there. So, it's definitely not the environment that they're designed-
That they're designed for. No, and I understand that, that's what I was saying, but I, but it would still be interesting to know if all the ones, for instance, once the windows broke out, then did, was there enough heat that then they, it set off the sprinklers or not? Or, you know, because there are still buildings being built, is there something we can learn in terms of sprinkling the others? Should we be sprinkling the attic space or something?
Yeah, absolutely. We can look into that and make sure that that's included in a report.
Counselor Echovol?
As we talk about report from the, or resulting report from the investigation, I wonder, is that going to be made public? And what is typically included in that sort of report that the community can look at? This would be potential information that they might have access to?
Yeah, so I can speak as far as the fire, the cause and origin report for the fire itself, typically that is all publicly available information. Now, if there is, if there is a criminal aspect to it, that's where I would defer to Chief, as far as what there becomes public.
So, it will become public, it's just a matter of time. Because if there is a criminal case, then it has to go through the judicial system, be completely adjudicated before that becomes public. Ultimately, it would be, it just takes a little bit longer.
Okay. Thank you. And thank you, thank you all for your efforts this last weekend. I'll mention that I'm a resident of Villebois as well, and I appreciate your efforts as well as other members of the community that helped that evening. Thank you.
Well, we know from conversations with a lot of Villebois residents that that is a very-
a very tight-knit community, and people look out for each other and see each other every day in the neighborhood. And in my perception, are very protective of their neighborhood. No matter what the question is, they feel strongly about it. And I think that that is a huge advantage of the sense of community that has grown there. And so this kind of thing probably hits harder than it would in a community that didn't quite have that sense. So I think we need to be cognizant of that and figure out, you know, what we've done right or what could be done better and make practical decisions about those kinds of things. So we're all looking forward to the information. Appreciate you all being here tonight. We would like to also hear from our building official about what his perceptions are up there. So maybe we could give him a mic and let him give us the viewpoint from the city building perspective. Good evening.
Hey, good evening, Mayor, Counsel. My name is Dan Carlson. I serve as the City's Building Official. I wish I was here under better circumstances tonight, but I just wanted to make myself available as a resource for you to ask questions and to get information about the buildings, the structures themselves. What I've done, what staff has done, is put together a map for you to just kind of highlight as of today, the structures that we have assessed and looked at with the permissions that we have to be on-site. So before I dive into that, I just, it's remarkable to me, as a City's Building Official, studying building codes, studying building safety, doing this for my career, that we have an event like this, and we have no injuries, we have no deaths. It's awesome. It's, I mean, I feel for the losses still, the property losses and such, but, you know, the people, they just, we don't have the injuries. And so there's a couple of things that I'd like to highlight toward the end that maybe speak to that. We had 16 structures involved, at least, that we've assessed at this point. Again, it's very early in our assessments, six of which are, by my estimation, a total loss at this point. Those that are total loss, you see in the darker red color on your screen. And the primary cause of the structure, the cause of the fire was from the, or the fire originated, rather, from a four-story condo building that was the Sienna Building, number two. You see that in the middle of your screen. And it was under construction. I mentioned there, it was four stories tall. It's been mentioned, and I think said very well by Toalatin Valley Fire, that this building, as it was under construction, was in its most vulnerable state during construction, being that it did not have firewalls in it yet. Those were yet to come in the course of construction. It did not have a fire sprinkler system built within it yet. That was still to come. And numerous other fire safety provisions that would get built into a structure like this. So you take a four-story wood frame building that is basically dry on the inside, and it's ripe, it's in its ripe stage for something like this. So the, there's been some questions about, well, there's a lot of this black foam roofing stuff that, that is, in fact, foam from the roofing that was in the process of being applied. And it's part of the roofing assembly. So really, in looking forward, we're doing damage assessments as we started today. We'll continue to work throughout this week. Because Toalatin Valley doesn't have, Toalatin Valley Fire doesn't have the permissions to access the homes, they've turned those homes over back to the occupants. We have to go and get those permissions from the occupants. So I've been working with various contacts, albeit Polygon Homes and some of the other homeowners that I spoke to on-site today, to get telephone numbers and email contacts to try to, what we really need to do as next steps is, after the external assessment, is do an internal assessment of those, of those buildings that have been damaged and really assess whether they're safe or not. And then be able to provide the, some direction to the homeowners as to how to move forward. I think some positives in this, if you were to look around the perimeter, most of those buildings are sited with a cement-based siding, a cement board siding or brick. In my opinion, that saves significantly in terms of the spread of fire. Having that non-combustible surface there definitely helps in that event. We also had fire sprinklers, as Counselor Lehan mentioned. That is a requirement in the Villebois neighborhood. And we are very interested in learning from this and understanding, it's very early right now, but understanding what occurred during the event and if those fire sprinklers worked, and if so, under what circumstances they worked. So we also obviously have things like smoke detectors and egress windows. But I asked the fire marshal this morning if they actually had to perform any rescues. And I think that's also an important point. And the answer to that was no. And I think that's, that is a real tribute to the neighbors who did a remarkable job of getting everybody out, waking everybody up and moving things forward. So my kudos to them, and certainly to the first responders. The firefighters did an amazing job of tackling this in a way that made sense, in a way that was smart to prevent further loss. And so I just wanted to acknowledge their efforts in this as well. With that, I would be happy to take questions.
Is that all of the presentations that we had prepared, Mr. Rohan? You got still?
Yeah, we, sorry, turn on my microphone. Yeah, we still have one more presentation by our Public Works to give you a status of what we're doing in terms of that.
Maybe we could ask for that before we start on questions. If you could, you could stay put right there, and we could ask your other presenter to come forward.
Martin's coming on up. And I'll let Martin introduce himself.
Thank you, Councilmembers. My name is Martin Montalvo. I'm the Operations Manager for the Public Works Department. I'm the Acting Director in Delora's absence, and I'm also the Emergency Coordinator for the city. So the city's response to this, we were first made aware of this shortly, around 3:00 AM on the evening of the event. We had two of our staff members on-site shortly after that, helping to provide security for the area, providing road closures and making sure that public safety and our efforts to secure the area were met. Gina, myself, several other members of our staff, by 6 o'clock, were on-site and coordinating our efforts to secure the area, start initial cleanup efforts, and then protect public safety and the environment, as all those were going to be a concern for us. So I've brought a brief aerial here to show you. One of our primary concerns was for the stormwater system and everything that was impacted by the fire eventually was going to be released, either by the fire suppression methods or any rainfall that came through, what we were going to start lining out for that. So what we've done since the morning of, we've traced back through our entire stormwater system. We've put protective measures throughout the city. We have two primary points where this material will eventually be collecting. One of them is Pond F, which is just north of the Graham's Ferry Park. And then there's another point just south of that, that's a secondary collection point. We're actively protecting those areas with absorbent boom and other measures, conducting checks throughout the day, and then doing cleanouts of all the stormwater system on that southbound area, primarily through contracted means. City has one vector truck, and we have to protect that as a resource for any other activity. So we're trying to do contracted methods for a lot of this material as much as possible. The other location is to the north. There is a water quality manhole just south of the Beckman Road roundabout, which we've determined most of the material is going to eventually start collecting in there. For us to chase it through the entire stormwater system is the tail wagging the dog to some extent. So we're setting up deliberate collection locations where we're going to be capturing the material and then disposing of it through our contracted vendor. The other thing that we've put in place is cleaning efforts for city assets as well as some privately owned assets. So we wanted to make sure this material's moving around through the community, it doesn't become a nuisance for the community and for the residents. Most of the roads southwest of the impact area, we started street sweeping on those yesterday. So just shortly after the fire was secured, by 11 o'clock, we started getting street sweepers moving out through that area. They're actively moving through the community. They're off-normal routes. So we're not going to have the benefit of being able to advise everyone to relocate your vehicle, but we're trying to capture as much of it as we can. This evening, we actually, today, we had staff post no parking restrictions along Barber for two block faces to advise the residents, this was one of the major collection points for material. We'd like you to stay off the road so we can hit this this evening and get a really good clean across that area. We've been able to clean the Piazza, that's private property, but the determination was made, we need to get this now. This is going to be one of these areas that's going to open up quickly. And if we don't get it here, it's just going to end up in the roadway in our stormwater system. We've also been able to clean several of the city-owned parks just south of the impact area. That was all primarily completed yesterday. In terms of messaging for residents and for HOA-owned properties, what we're advising them is, the material that it may be collecting on your private property is a responsibility for the private property owner that the city cannot take on the efforts of cleaning those areas. The material itself, from the best information that we've provided, is fairly safe to handle, but we are advising everyone, use common sense and personal protective equipment as needed. Our own staff is not touching any of the material without at least some respiratory protection, so an N95 mask and some nitro gloves. You can dispose of the materials through your standard waste stream. Please don't put it with the recyclables. Moving forward, we're going to be working with Polygon. We're partnering with them and making sure that the city's providing everything that we can. They're in the loop, we're in the loop. Everybody knows roles and responsibilities. We're going to clean and maintain everything outside of what we refer to as the hot zone. Once the hot zone inspection, investigation is completed, we're working with Polygon and instructing them what they will have to do in terms of cleanup. So there's quite a bit of material that's still around the hot zone. They'll have to scrape most of that out, bring in street sweeping equipment, make sure all of that's addressed with, and then disposed of properly. Once they are done, we're going to do a trust but validate process, so all of that's going to be inspected by city inspectors or third-party inspectors, including TV-ing and inspecting all of our underground assets to make sure everything gets cleaned properly. The last thing that I'll reiterate is, there are several vehicles that were damaged as a result of this. And we're working with the Fire District and the investigators. Once the investigation area is released, we'll be advising residents that the city, by our nuisance code, has to set a deadline for these vehicles to be addressed. The private vehicle owners should be working with their insurance company to try and make sure their claims are processed and the vehicle is moved within a timely manner. But we'll put that messaging out once the investigation is completed, the area is free for people to move around with. The last thing is, although, while the hot zone and the investigation might cease at a certain point, we may keep portions of that courtyard area closed off from public access, just because the infrastructure through there, the pavement, the concrete has been damaged to some extent, and we'll have to evaluate how much public access we'll be granting to that area until everything can be fully reconstructed. With that, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Well, thank you. Counsel, questions for these gentlemen? Counselor Lehan?
Turn on my thing. It occurs to me, for Dan, the, we have in the City of Villaville a number of structures in this very same, even if they're not four stories tall, in this very same state of vulnerability. In Frog Pond, in Long Twos in Villebois and other parts of Villebois, is, are there steps we should be taking or the builders should be taking to not have a repeat of this when these building, structures are in this very vulnerable state? Or do we advise the builder on these sort of things, or what's our thought?
Sure, that's a great question. Not one that I'm sure I can answer very well at this point. I would be happy to get back with you with some more insights on that, if I can think about that for a bit. One thing that does come to mind is that we were under obligation by the state, Building Code's Division, to inspect to what we call Min-Max codes. They're the maximum code that we can enforce, but they're the minimum that the builders have to build to. So we can't really, we can't, it's outside of the bounds of our authority to impose additional construction codes on a builder from a building construction perspective. Now, we may be able to do some other things locally with some local amendments, but that's something that I'd like to look at further. Barricading a construction site is a common sense thing that we do encourage folks to, contractors to do when they get to this stage. It isn't necessarily a code requirement, though, so when it comes down to actually issuing a correction notice, you know, citing and writing, we would have difficulty with that.
I was more thinking along the lines of general advice or best practices kinds of things, but we can discuss it more another time.
Absolutely.
Counselor West?
With how this has developed, it's one of the densest parts of the community, and even parking and has, and the housing and how tight it is, did that, with the investigations and how we look at this, does that play a role in the severity of this fire? And if so, when we look at this again, are there things that we could do differently when we build out? Or, I know we responded fantastically, it sounds like TFNR is amazing, but is there anything else we can do with how things are developed or built to make sure that we don't have this type of exposure and incident?
Could I ask maybe the fire chief to come forward and help answer this question? Get both of your perspectives on it.
Sure. But I do, I mean, I live in this neighborhood as well. I moved from the country into the city, and so certainly I wanted a neighborhood that was safe for my family. Sprinklers is a big part of that. And I think the fact that people survived this major fire is important. But when I looked at the fire situation, here we have this large, four-story, all-wood structure burning. And the radiant heat equally affected everything around it and caught some things on fire, and some things stood a little bit better than others. But when I walked through it personally, you have, you actually had a city street, and you had frontage in front of the burned building and the homes across the street. So you literally had separation of probably 50 feet. So there are not very many neighborhoods anywhere that have 50 feet setbacks between their structures. So the fire didn't go from house to house to house based on the setbacks between the houses. It was radiant equally all the way around this structure. Again, three times in my career, I haven't seen this in 30 years, three times, and it was the same situation. This was less because the buildings around the ones in the previous fires we had were actually exposed wood as well. They were all being built in the same fashion. So from my perspective, you had a huge setback. That wasn't what was at play here. This was just an anomaly, a massive four-story structure, fully involved, lots of heat.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carlson, do you have a perspective on?
I really can't add anymore to that. That's a spot-on response.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
I had, I don't mean to, but, well, before the fire chief leaves, so. Or the building official, I don't know. Did gas lines play a role in anything on any of these structures, or was that shut off very quickly so that it didn't become an issue? Or, I don't recall seeing Northwest Natural there, but...
So I'd have to look to the fire marshal, make sure what I can say and what I can't say. Can I answer that question?
Yes, I think it should be, any answer should be tentative, you know.
Let me bring him up.
Structure of origin does not have gas to it, and you're going to have to...
No. Yeah, no, I didn't figure that the, that the, that the building under construction had gas to it, but I didn't know on any of the surrounding structures, did we turn the gas off on those as soon as, often to that neighborhood as soon as we arrived, or?
Yes, not to the neighborhood, per se, but to the immediate area. So part of our practice and procedure is, as we arrive, we have truck companies, and their responsibility is to turn off the gas. So as they're going around a fire structure, they'll turn that gas off, quarter turn valve, turn it off, and we leave it off the whole time. A lot of times they'll shut off power in the garages as well, but that's just standard procedure, nothing unusual.
Right. So we didn't have any acceleration because of gas things, gas brakes going on?
So we had a situation where one builder apparently was involved in most of these structures, Mr. Carlson especially maybe. Do you foresee they will be involved more broadly than just starting over on the structure that was under construction? Will they have involvement in the other structures, or what are we looking at?
I think that's going to be yet to determine, once the insurance companies have their say in this as well. The other builder was, so Polygon Homes is the primary builder, as you can see up on your, on your screen there. Down toward the, to the left, you see some, a series of homes by David Weekly. Three of those were total loss, in my opinion, but I think that we'll just need to continue to look into what the issues are with each of those structures, and continue to do our best at inspecting them. I would like to say, if I may, I did leave some business cards on the back counter. If there's anybody here in the audience who are watching, if you are in an occupant in one of these homes and wanted inspected, I really would love to hear from you. We'll make this quick and easy for you. We just, so just please, please be in touch with me.
Thank you so much, gentlemen. Appreciate all the work and all the information here. Ms. Rohan, do we have further information planned for the public?
Yep. Absolutely. So I would say there's, we've been fielding phone calls, and I know there's been lots of discussion in the community as to how they can assist those that have been displaced. And what we are recommending is that if folks want to assist, certainly monetarily, there are a number of different ways that people can do that, and we certainly leave it up to each individual person as to how they would like to go about that. The Red Cross has been involved in this from the very get-go. TVFNR contacted them right at the beginning of this fire, and they've been a partner with TVFNR as well as ourselves. So Red Cross is set up well as an organization for victim assistance. They are an organization that certainly would accept donations if people are interested in contributing monetarily. They are kind of the organization that we have told folks, if they're interested in it, they're an organization that is always already set up. But there are a number of different ways that people can contribute to this, to this cause. So I just want folks to know, if you're, if you're looking for, has there been any city-designated organization to contribute to? We have not designated anything from a city's standpoint. However, there are a number of organizations set up to, and able to assist in that effort, and the Red Cross is one that I know TVFNR has worked with on a number of occasions, and they have recommended that as well. The other piece of that is, we are working our partners, TVFNR, our police department, the city, we're all working to see if we can put together a community meeting for the community tomorrow evening. We're trying to pull together some of the details, but this would really be intended as an opportunity for all of us to come together as a community, for us to share information with the community, to answer any questions, and kind of talk about where we're going from here. So I don't have the details of a location yet, we're still trying to finalize that. It will be in the evening, though. That works well, I think, for folks who are working during the day, so we will be holding that meeting in the evening. And we will certainly get information out to the public. TVFNR, their public information, folks will be assisting in that effort, as well as the city and the Clackamas County Sheriff's Office, so.
So we're looking at locations in the neighborhood?
We, well, ideally, we'd like to see if we can find a location in the neighborhood. We're trying to find a location that's large enough. We've got a couple in mind right now, and I don't want to mention them publicly until we've got them finalized. Last thing I want is people showing up at a location when we've moved it.
So our city communications people will get it on social media as soon as we have detail?
Absolutely. We will put it out on social media, and we'll certainly put information on our website, and I'm sure there will be press releases.
But we're looking at tomorrow evening?
Tomorrow evening, yep. And the last thing that I would say is, I just want to thank, I want to thank TVFNR for all of their work that they have done on this, from the top all the way down in that, in that agency, and the sheriff's office. They have done an amazing job. Sheriff's Office has been out on site from the very beginning, our own police department, Chief Warps was out there in the morning with myself, and our own city staff, who has been working tirelessly over the last couple of days, as you've heard from our Public Works, as well as our building staff. So this really has been a team effort and a partnership with all the agencies, and I just want them to hear from me. Thank you for all that you've done the last couple of days.
All right. Council, other questions for staff at this point? I'm not seeing any. We're reaching the end of our, what's designated...
Wait, I do have one, sorry.
Yes, ma'am?
Sorry. I'm trying to communicate so many things all day, I think, trying to forget things. One other thing, is there is information on the back counter back there from Clackamas County Mental Health? There's some information for, I know a lot of folks, and I don't know if any of you in the, in the audience or have family or friends that are struggling with this event, that's very natural, and there's information in the back from Clackamas County Mental Health. There is a crisis line, there's a magnetic, it looks like, that's back there on the counter, as well as some additional information. So I would encourage you to grab that, it's on the table there at the corner, grab that on the way out, and certainly take care of yourselves, take care of your family members, take care of your community and your friends.
Okay, thank you. So we will be ending our work session here, and with just a couple of minutes, for anybody that wanted to head home, you're certainly welcome to do that, but if you want to stay for our meeting, we do have a public input piece very near the front of the agenda on our official city council meeting, which will take up here in a few minutes. And if you wish to speak, please do complete a speaker card from the counter at the side of the room and pass it forward, and we'll give you a chance to make comments or offer your perspectives. So thank you all for coming, and I will call the work session over at 7:48, and like I say, a couple of minutes will take up with the city council meeting.